Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's December 5th, 2023 City Council meeting. We've got a big crowd tonight. It's wonderful to see everybody here. We would ask that each and everyone please silence all electronic devices at this time. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Kathy Hikes for tonight's invocation.
Let's all take a deep breath. Tonight, we gather for a ritual of our democracy as we transfer the responsibility of governing to a new member and return the mayor and the council member to their rightfully earned seats. These rites of passage are important to the order of things. They reassure us that all will be well.
We ask a blessing on the new board. We ask for guidance, vision, and wisdom as this council makes its way into a new era. Bestow on them a nap for analysis laced with practicality as guardians of the public purse and custodians of the physical plan we work in and enjoy. We ask that you instill patience in their families when the work requires more than seems reasonable. Help their families, friends, and supporters remember to provide the continuing encouragement that is often needed by those who choose to serve in public life. We are reminded that support cannot stop at the voting booth but is welcomed throughout the term. Bless the employees of this city. Bless our neighbors. Bless the hungry and the homeless. Let us be reminded to bless each other with kindness. As we head into winter, we remember that it is a time for endings. Let us remember too that endings give way to beginnings and hopes for life anew. The winter calls us to be reflective, providing an opportunity to rejoice in our accomplishments, measure our challenges, and set our goals for the future. We have enjoyed a rich harvest at our tables and in our lives. Let us all learn that sometimes it is necessary to just abide and to trust that all will be well. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kathy. Our next item is the approval of minutes November 20th, 2023, City Council Work Session and November 21st, 2023 City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is approved. The next item is the special presentation this evening in recognition of many years of service for outgoing councilmember Kathy Hikes. At this time, I'm going to recognize councilmember Bob Ward to open our presentation with a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, it is our honor and pleasure to recognize the dedicated service of City Councilmember Kathy Hikes. She first served as City Councilmember from 1981 to 1985 and returned to the City Council in October 2014 to fill the unexpired term of David Huffman when he was appointed to the position of City Attorney. From that time on, Kathy was reelected until this year when she decided not to run for reelection. During her service, she also served as Mayor Pro Tem from 2018 to 2021. Kathy has distinguished herself as a public servant with the highest integrity and character. Kathy constantly sought to use her time, energy, and experience to solve challenges that have faced her city and to make life better for all of our citizens.
Councilmember Wall?
Kathy has devoted her life to community service and improving the lives of others. In addition to her service to the Burlington City Council, she has also held numerous civic leadership positions with organizations such as the Governor's North Carolina Advisory Council on Head Start, Burlington City Board of Education, the Foundation serving Alamance, Alamance County United Way, Alamance County Human Relations Commission. She's assisted in funding the University Institute of Bermuda, the Alamance County Rape Crisis Alliance, now known for crossroads, and the County's Coalition on Adolescent Pregnancy.
Councilmember Owen?
Kathy, you just hit me. Maybe we could change this thing around a little bit and make it a six-person council and welcome to one and keep you up here. We love that. In addition to her civic duties, Kathy was honored and named for a number of awards well-deserving. The Alamance County Civic Youth Club Woman of the Year Award in 1991. She received the Governor's Award for Outstanding Volunteer Services in 1988. United Ways Volunteers of the Year in 1988. 1988 was a good year, Kathy. She and her late husband Bob were named North Carolina Main Street Champions by the City of Burlington and the Burlington Downtown Corporation in 2020. And she rarely misses an event or a function in the downtown area as a supporter of downtown. She spent countless hours of her time to be part of the community through mentoring, supporting community groups, participating in numerous ribbon cuttings, grant openings, and throughout the Burlington community. And Kathy, you will be missed by an awful lot of people. Nothing but the best of luck.
On behalf of the residents and employees of the City of Burlington and the Burlington City Council, it is our honor to extend to Kathy Hikes this recognition of her superlative efforts and accomplishments by presenting to her a key to the City of Burlington. As our token of sincere appreciation for her loyal and dedicated service to the betterment of the City of Burlington. I want to read the inscription. "The Key to the City of Burlington Presented to Kathy Hikes by the Burlington City Council in appreciation for over a decade of leadership, dedication, and service to the City of Burlington. We are forever grateful for your wisdom, your compassion, inclusivity, and friendship while serving as an elected official. Councilmember 1981 to 1985, 2014 to 2018, 21 to 23, Mayor Pro Tem 2018 to 2021. The impact you made and the lives you have positively affected and improved will be felt for many generations." Kathy, please step forward and receive our gift.
Kathy, if you can't think of a better person or a broader person to give this to you, a few flowers. This is a true lady, a true leader, and someone who's done an awful lot this community for a number of years. Kathy, we're going to miss you desperately.
We're going to give Kathy a few moments to share some words, but I really call it inappropriate for this council to be able to share a few personal comments about our experience and Kathy's impact on our lives over the many years previous. For me tonight, tonight's bittersweet. I'm very happy for Kathy. She's moved into a different chapter in her life, but I'm selfishly disappointed that her voice and her influence will no longer be a part of my life on this council. Kathy's not only had a significant influence on our community, but she has also influenced me personally. Her commentary, her insightfulness, her voice of reason. It's helped me realize that there are multiple directions to get to the same place. Her perspectives have gained my attention and piqued my curiosity more times than not. Probably at times when she didn't think I was even listening, but I was. During some of the most difficult decisions, her experience and her knowledge resonated with those of us that were involved in making that decision. And she, without knowledge, showed me how to embrace the vision of others and to incorporate those ideas into the vision that I saw, that I was focused on. And in turn, many of the things that have been important to Kathy during her tenure have become important to me. And Kathy, I will continue to embrace those areas as you have taught me. Kim and I both love and appreciate you and your influence on our family. And both from a council perspective and a personal perspective, I feel like I'm the better person for your friendship and your wisdom being in my life. Thank you for sharing your knowledge and thank you for your patience. And I love you and wish you all the best.
Amen.
I want to be a little bit lighter on this. I first met Kathy as a 22-year-old just graduating from North Carolina State. And that was about the time we were trying to, we basically turned downtown into a mall, if many of you remember that or not. Many of you may not. Kathy was the key leader in that, if I recall. She was great in getting orders. She knew what she wanted and she expected us to do it before my duties. And that's something that I think all of us in public service needs to understand. And we work for the people, not for ourselves. And it's our responsibility to do whatever we can to make this a better place to live and to raise a family. So Kathy, you were a leader and always have been a leader in that and a mentor to many of us. And we're going to miss you desperately.
Gosh, it's hard to follow up with the mayor's comments and councilmember's always comments. I will say many years ago, when I was the mayor, we had an opportunity to appoint someone. And back then, David Huffman came to me and said, "What about Kathy Hikes?" And I'll be honest with you, I didn't know anything about Kathy Hikes. And so I met Kathy and from there, she ended up getting our votes for being on the council. And she's been nothing but a star since. She's pulled us to the side when things weren't exactly right. She has an opinion about a lot of different things and she's willing to share those opinions. She's made us all better, not just the mayor, but all of us better in her thoughts. And the things that she pulls you to the side and tells you are things you'll never hear right here in front of all of you. But she's outstanding. Her family and this community should be very, very proud of Kathy Hikes. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
As has been earlier stated, Kathy's lifetime of public service speaks for itself. Now, tonight, rather than speak of this as a retirement or farewell, I would like to characterize this occasion as a commencement ceremony. And I need to explain that if I could. If the city were a university, Kathy's transcript would show that she earned straight A's in her lifetime of public service. So if the city were a university, we would be awarding her a PhD in public service with the highest of honors. Kathy would and could indeed write a book on public service, and maybe she should. Finally, I can assure all of our citizens that they have been exceptionally well represented by Kathy Hikes during her tenure on the city council. It has been my honor and pleasure to work with you on the city council over the years. I will miss your wise counsel and personal presence. May God bless you and we wish you the very best in all your future endeavors.
Amen.
Okay, Kathy, it's your turn.
You may be sorry. I do have a few remarks, seven or eight pages for you. Ronnie, I'm going to go over 10 minutes. Just kidding.
You don't really need to bring that up.
This is, this is not going to be easy. I'll see if I can make it through this. But I've asked to spend a few minutes of this final meeting of my term of office to leave you with a few thoughts and observations. In many ways, this is self-serving, but I hope it strikes a chord with you for the work that you will do in the coming years. I first want to point out, as I have before, how necessary I think it is to acknowledge and celebrate our accomplishments. We quickly move in the city on to the next challenge and only brag when we are campaigning. These remarks are targeted to you, mayor and council, but also for all of our city employees. I cannot remember how many times I have heard unsolicited these words. "I think this city is really well-run." It is usually said as though I might contradict this observation, but it is easy to assure residents that they are right. It truly has been a well-run city, and every employee can take the compliment. An incredibly talented senior staff sets the tone and has managed to keep our services to the public at a very high level over many years. The importance of council support has led to some extraordinary progress in all areas of the city. I can point to the following, and it's a long list. Addressing the Western Electric Site Cleanup in a Determined and Intentional Way. Code Enforcement to Address Blighted Neighborhoods. Maintaining Streets Throughout the City and Paving in Critical Neighborhoods. Projects that Would Challenge a Much Larger Staff That Come Together on Time and Contribute to the Attraktivness, Safety, Enjoyment, and Viability of Our City. An Emphasis on Clean Water for Ourselves and for Those Downstream from Our City. New Events and Recreational Facilities and the Publicity That Alerts Us to Them. The Refurbishment of Our Cherished Carousel. Revised Development Laws to Make Our Processes More Transparent and Collaborative. Consistent and Targeted Trash Pickup and Support for Neighborhood Cleanup. Maintenance of Parks and Public-Private Partnerships to Create Them. Excellence in Financial Audits and Ratings. Accredited Model Police and Fire Departments. Documented Increased Prosperity Through a Focus on Economic Development. Professional Engineering of All the Things That We Have Been Building. The Tri-Gig Project and the Attraction of Lumos to Provide Digital Access for All. Link Transit, a New Shelter for Animals, and a Legal Department that Keeps Us Mostly Out of Trouble. And so much more I failed to mention. We have done a lot. Everybody, take a bow. Now for the asks. I would not be in character if I did not raise some questions before I leave. When I have been out among residents, I ask them what they think our city needs. Three priorities typically emerge more than any others. Sidewalks, affordable housing, and to be treated fairly. We have done a remarkable job with our greenways, bikeways, and sidewalks, yet there is much to be done across our city. The list never seems to get shorter. Even so, we need to continue working on this. The two other topics are more perplexing and seem intractable, but with the same attention, I believe, can be addressed. The movement toward Burlington taking the lead in a consortium with adjacent counties and cities to manage the home funds we receive from the federal government will set in motion what I hope will become an innovative and thoughtful model. This was a creative response to a governmental dilemma, and I commend the mayor and council and staff for the work that is bringing us about. We are painfully aware that there are great needs for housing for the homeless and much begs to be done. Adequate and available housing for the homeless has been shown in other cities to go a long way towards reducing the number of people who are homeless. The larger problem for us, though, is the plight of those families that are so burdened with their housing costs that they face eviction or foreclosure. Until the supply catches up with demand, this trend will continue, but our numbers are very high. We need small houses, patio homes, and townhouses that are for sale, not for rental. We need renovated housing in key neighborhoods to keep them stable. We need to concentrate on our code enforcement efforts to assure sanitary and habitable housing in our existing stock. Our charter provides for a housing commission which is now dormant. I suggest we reintroduce this commission as soon as we hire a staff person to address the housing area. I believe we must have a person on our staff who wakes up every morning thinking about how to improve our housing problem. We should, as a city, make significant investments in housing through bonds to incentivize affordable housing. Hire the staff and design a strategic plan to accomplish all of this, working with other agencies in our community who are also focused on housing. More growth is on its way to Burlington, and we don't want to be too late to tackle these future needs. My final request for your attention is to this. I first came to Burlington in 1974. Imagine, I can't believe it myself, but nearly 50 years ago. It was, relatively speaking, a small town. Burlington is no longer that small town. We have discussed this issue publicly a few times through the years but have not been able to move forward on it. This is the issue of equity and elections. I do not believe that the council is as representative as it needs to be in our current day. I am calling on you to expand the number of council members and provide for localized races to make sure voices from all over the city are provided for. However you work this out will be good for the city and may help bridge the divide we hear. and may help bridge the divide we hear about so often. I don't believe this criticism of us, fair or not, will go away until we address this. It would not be symbolic only. It will show that this council is serious about equity, not just in name and practice, but also in our resolve. I believe this is an important action to take and an urgent one. While it is taxing enough to cover all the ground that we do all year long, I hope you will consider putting this on your agenda for the coming year. I greatly regret that I did not put this forward myself. I am hoping you will fix this for me. I love this city with a mature love that comes from, I knew this would be hard, comes from commitment, engagement, and the same determination it takes to make a relationship work. As in a marriage, I know its foibles, quirks, and warts. There are blind spots and areas that could be better. But if given a choice, I would make the same decision again, to be a part of something very important, to work for the common good among such good people, and to live in and delight in a city to be proud of. Thank you all so much for the honor and the privilege. It has been my pleasure.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the certification of the election. Confirmation of the Alamance County Board of Elections and Guilford County Board of Elections official results for municipal election held on November 7th, 2023. At this time, we'll recognize our city clerk, Beverly Smith. Beverly?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I will confirm the acceptance of the Alamance County Board of Elections and the Guilford County Board of Elections official results for the municipal elections held on November 7th, 2023. Votes for Mayor, Jim Butler, 3,013. Beth Canet, 2,813. Right-in votes, 8. Votes for council members, DeWanna Bigelow, 3,139. Bob Ward, 3,024. Charlie Beasley, 2,484. CeeLo Fawcett, 1,770. Right-in votes, 33. Let it be confirmed that Jim Butler is the duly-elected mayor for a two-year term expiring December 2025. DeWanna Bigelow and Bob Ward are the duly-elected council members for four-year terms expiring in December 2027. At this time, we will administer the oath of office to our newly-elected officials and I'll ask re-elected Mayor Jim Butler and re-elected Councilmember Bob Ward to come forward to receive their oath of office. Their family members as well, if you'll come up. Okay, so for photo opportunities, it would be nice if you could face that direction as well. I am not as supportive as this moment. Okay. All ready? It is my honor and it is a privilege to administer your oath of office. Please raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Jim Butler.
I, Jim Butler.
I, Bob Ward.
I, Bob Ward.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithfully.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the laws of said state.
The Constitution of the laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of councilmember.
The duties of the office of councilmember.
For the city of Burlington.
For the city of Burlington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. It is our pleasure to invite the Honorable Judge Larry Brown Jr. of Alamance County, Judicial District 16A, to come forward. He is going to administer the oath of office to our newly-elected official, Councilmember DeWanna Bigelow, who will also come forward to receive her oath of office and her family will join her as well.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
To Mayor Butler, to the Honorable Board, to City Manager Honeycutt and Attorney Huffman. I bring you greetings and ladies and gentlemen to each of you. Hey!
Hey!
DeWanna, I told you a long time ago that a dream deferred is not a dream denied. And you stand here today because Mama Edna Harris stayed on her knees praying for you. And I know she's saying, look at my baby girl. Ladies and gentlemen, Councilmember Bigelow and all of you, the city of Burlington, you've made history tonight. You stand here as the very first African-American woman to be a city council member in the city of Burlington. Look at God! So I hear my wife saying, do what they told you to do and sit down. So Ms. Bigelow, please place your left hand on the Bible. And then I want you to, if you don't mind raising your right. They need to see you. Where, there's the cameraman, there he is. This is history. If you would please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, DeWanna Bigelow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear.
And bear.
True allegiance.
True allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of said state.
And laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city councilmember.
Of city councilmember.
For the city of Burlington.
For the city of Burlington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God. So help me God! Ladies and gentlemen, joining me and welcoming the newest councilmember of Burlington, DeWanna Bigelow.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item, now that the new council has convened, is to the election of the mayor pro tem which is required by our city charter. At this time, we'll open the floor for nominations of mayor pro tem.
Mayor, I nominate Harold Owen.
We have a motion for Harold Owen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other names for mayor pro tem?
I'll make a motion to close nominations, mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll vote on the approval of Harold Owen as mayor for pro tem. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried, congratulations to Harold Owen as our mayor pro tem and continued doing a great job. Our next item is the Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize our city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None.
Mayor, would you want us to do his oath of office?
At this point in time, we'll do the oath of office for mayor pro tem.
I, Harold Owen.
I, Harold Owen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
To the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and truly execute.
Well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of mayor pro tem.
The duties of the office of mayor pro tem.
For the city of Burlington.
The city of Burlington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our next item on the agenda is the additions requested to the consent agenda, which are Item F, the approval of Hub International Broker Consultant Services; Item G, to set a date of public hearing to adopt a resolution to create and levy a municipal room occupancy tax; and Item H, a contract award to Hazen &amp; Sawyer and approval of Budget Amendment 2024-17. At this time, I request a motion for the additions to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those additions are approved. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, we need a motion to adopt the agenda with those additions.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for the adoption of the agenda, and congratulations, Councilmember Bigelow, for your first.
First motion. Thank you.
Our next item is the consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the 2023 North Carolina Firefighters Association Annual Roster Certification pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 58-86-25. Item B, to approve proposed 2024 fees and charges, schedule changes to be effective January 1st, 2024. Item C, to approve an IRU fiber sublease and a memorandum of understanding between the city of Burlington and the city of Greensboro for fiber connectivity between sites and for the purpose of establishing disaster recovery solutions for both Burlington and Greensboro. Item D, to approve the proposed 2024 regular work session and city council meetings scheduled of the Burlington City Council. Item E, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-16 for police department donations received to be allocated to the Melvin Hall Fund. Item F, to approve Hub International as the broker for the health, dental, and ancillary products for the city of Burlington, and to authorize the city manager and chief financial officer to execute the contract once approved by the city attorney and the finance department. Item G, to set a date of public hearing for January 2nd, 2024, to consider adopting a resolution to levy a municipal room occupancy tax. Item H, to award a contract to Hazen &amp; Sawyer and approve Budget Amendment 2024-17 for the professional services related to contaminants of emerging concern study. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, it's read.
We have a, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, at this time, we'll move into our public hearings. During our public hearings, there will be a public comment period, since there are many of us here tonight, we're gonna have some staff that are gonna be in the aisles to help us identify if anyone would like to speak during these public hearings. Moving into Item 1, a public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider adopting a resolution to support an application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program on behalf of Matthews International, and consideration granting a local incentive award for an expansion project at the property located at 2056 Willow Springs Lane in Burlington. At this time, we'll recognize our Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here this evening to discuss the project for Matthews International's expansion at Willow Springs Lane. Matthews International is proposing to renovate and expand a 34,000 square foot industrial building at that address. The company is proposing to make an investment in real and personal property of $10 million in the city of Burlington. The company will create 26 jobs over a three-year period with an average salary of $64,061. And the total request before council and within your resolution is for $200,000 in incentives, $100,000 of that will be in a building reuse grant from, in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and $100,000 will be a 1% incentive that city council is at their, their pleasure to award as they see fit. In the crowd today, from Matthews International, we have Chris Sheets, the head of North Caro- or North American Operations for Matthews International, and David Owens, the Director of Operations for the Burlington Plant. I would ask Chris Sheets to come up and talk a little bit about Matthews International and the project that they're going to undertake.
Thank you, thanks for having me this evening. Thank you, Peter. And congratulations to the newly-elected official and the re-elected ones, as well as the outgoing official. Congratulations, thank you for your service. Okay, so yeah, just echoing what Peter said, just here to talk about Matthews International. Matthews International is a public company based out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We've been in business for almost 175 years. We entered the community back in 2018 when we acquired the facility formerly known as Frost Converting Systems. You know, we, we joined the community to, to better our products that serve the consumer packaging industry, and Matthews, being in business for as long as we have, we're constantly innovating and reinvesting in our facilities and our people. So what we're looking to do is bring new products servicing new markets. One of those markets being energy initiatives. I think we're all aware of the local energy initiatives going on throughout the communities, especially in the state of North Carolina, especially around Burlington. We have two products that we would look to bring in, or consider bringing in, around lithium-ion battery manufacturing of engineered machines, as well as competing technology in the hydrogen fuel cell industry, servicing energy storage markets. Any other questions or comments, or?
Any questions, council? I think we could, Peter, anything else from city's perspective?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll wrap up briefly. Of course, this is not our first rodeo with building reuse grants, the program is a state program operated by the Department of Commerce. The grant actually comes to the city of Burlington, we administer it, and then reimburse, in this case Matthews International, for costs that they would incur for the development of this new facility. It does require a cash match of the local government, which in this case would be $5,000. This would be our sixth potential building reuse grant since 2019, and just to recap what those projects have meant just directly, 200 new jobs for the city of Burlington, and over 13 million of investment just in the last five years, so the city's been successful with these programs. We're very happy to partner with our local industries to see expansion and renovation of facilities. So in addition, as I mentioned, to this building reuse grant, the company has requested local incentives. Staff is recommending a 1% local incentive in the amount of $100,000 to be paid over a five-year term. We've done some internal modeling of this project, it is a cash flow proj- positive project throughout the five years of the incentive period, with a very significant positive internal rate of return on investment. And Matthews International does have another facility in San Antonio, Texas, the city of Burlington's facility is competing with that facility in Texas for this investment and this project. So staff finds that this incentive, in our purview, is necessary and competitive, and it is in line with the city of Burlington and city council's incentive policy as amended earlier this year in January. So just to recap, Matthews International is making a significant $10 million investment at their plant at 2056 Willow Springs Lane. They will be creating 26 jobs through this project, those jobs are $14,000 per year higher than the average annual wage in Alamance County, so good jobs. Of course, investing in a new and emerging technology, and graduating from the legacy business that was purchased, and reinvesting in products that will serve the EV and hydrogen fuel cell supply chain. And we have the state who will be covering one-half of this total incentive, so all in all, we feel that this is an appropriate incentive, and we would ask that you approve the resolution before you. And I'll take any questions that you may have, thank you.
Any questions for Peter or staff on this request?
Peter, the reuse grant program, as it's, as our call in our community, it's always been very successful, and I would imagine it's across the states that way.
Yes, sir.
It's a wonderful opportunity to take maybe an aging building, bring it back to life, and, and give it new life, in terms of what it can do, in terms not only of the product it produces, but also the economic impact it has for the community.
That's right.
So the jobs, to be quite frankly, for our people in our community also.
Yes, we feel it's a very good fit, it, it allows the state to be a partner in investing in incentives, so not just the local government. We have staff that, you know, Michael Littell is here with me, the Economic Development staff, we work together in administering these grants, and we're currently processing payments for two of the other grants that we recently received. So it has been very successful for Burlington, has led to significant job creation and investment.
It's a very relationship between the state government and local government also.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone on this side of the auditorium that would like to come up and speak on this item? You don't have to, but you got the right. Anyone on this side of the room that would like to come up and speak? Council seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request for the building reuse grant as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request as presented, in reference to its content laid out by the owner or the business, and also by Peter Bishop. And I believe it certainly has some substantial economic impacts on our entire community.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion is approved, thank you for being here, thank you for being a part of Burlington, and congratulations on 175 years. And I, I would be remiss, I didn't notate that in the Tri Business Journal, there was an article about this very proposal, so congratulations on the approval of that, thank you. Our next item, Item 2. A public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the exchange of certain city-owned real property for certain real property owned by Laboratory Corporation of America Burlington, North Carolina. At this time, we'll recognize our city manager, Craig Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilperson, personally thank you, and Councilman Moore, and Councilman Bigelow for your recent election, and we, as staff, are excited and look forward to working with you as well. As you are aware, the city has been working closely with LabCorp to basically swap existing downtown parking lots owned by each entity. This was presented to city council at our November 20th work session, and a date of public hearing was scheduled at the November 21st city council meeting. The city lot is located adjacent to the current LabCorp headquarters, 219 Maple Avenue, and South Spring Street, and East Morehead Street. Current plans by LabCorp is that they want to enhance their headquarters campus with additional landscaping, as they recently tore down the building on Maple to make a green space. The LabCorp lot is located at 220 East Davis Street and 271 Front Street. The city has had independent appraisals done of both parking lots, and each came back at $125,000 each. However, LabCorp requested to keep 10 parking spaces that is adjacent to their building on Front Street, the CB Ellis Building that they currently own, to make it more marketable for sale, which made the final appraisal of that parking lot $119,000. As required by state statute, we must hold a public hearing when we are exchanging city-owned property and real estate for other private and real property, and we'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for city manager on this item? Nothing changed since our presentation.
No, sir.
The work session.
No, sir.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on Item 2, which is the resolution authorizing the exchange of certain city-owned property. If there's anyone on this side of the auditorium that would like to speak, please raise your hand. If there's anyone on this side of the auditorium that would like to speak? Council seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, council? At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the resolution authorizing the exchange of property as proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion authorizing the exchange of property as proposed between the city of Burlington and the Laboratory Corporation of America.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that resolution is adopted, thank you for everyone's help. At this time, we'll move into our public comments period, there are no comments, no one signed up for public comments this evening, so at this time, we'll move into city council comments. I have a few that I would like to make on behalf of staff. Just a reminder that Holiday Magic, this Saturday, December 9th, in downtown Burlington, beginning from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., with live music, community organizations, we have kids activities, trackless train rides, snowball toss, obstacle course, artisan market, and photos with Santa. Sounds exactly like something we need to participate in. Another item is Christmas in the Park at Burlington City Park, Friday, December 22nd, beginning at 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. with photos with Santa, free amusement park rides, we've got a hayride through City Park, there's a sledding hill, holiday crafts, cookies, cocoa, face painting, and much more, so two very well-organized events for our community by the city's recreation and parks staff. I do want to acknowledge one of our very own, many of you seen in the Alamance News, and certainly on Facebook, Gary Hicks, a former city employee, and I don't know if, I don't know if Gary's even here, I thought, probably might would be here, but after 53 years of playing softball, Gary Hicks was inducted into the Softball Hall of Fame. We're very proud of him, so let's give him a round of applause. That's what it said, it said 53 years, I couldn't believe that.
He's still playing, though.
And he's still playing. So, one other item, I, I do want to congratulate, many in this room are familiar with City Gate Dream Center, and they just had their 10th anniversary. My wife, Kim, and I, and our daughter Megan, was able to attend their gala on Friday evening, wonderful event, but I do want to congratulate them. It is definitely one of my favorite nonprofits in the community, and they do a phenomenal job, and I want to congratulate them, Lisa Edwards and her team, on 10 years and a wonderful event, and we're so honored that we were asked to be a part of it. Last item on my list is, don't forget about, we sent out public notice about the closing of the Mainwater Aquatic Center, MAC, we did receive briefing last night as to the reason why, I think staff's gonna come to this council with what our options are in January. So we look forward to hopefully a swift resolution to that, but to the end, I know no one's happy about it being closed, but public safety is our primary concern, we cannot waver on that. And on behalf of me, I want to welcome our newest member, councilmember DeWanna Bigelow, and I assure you that this council stands to work with you on any item, and we cherish you as a member of this board, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Any other council comments? DeWanna, you got the loose-
DeWanna, you got to loosen up a little bit. There was a board.
Are we gonna have something?
I will. Let's try. All this serious stuff, because sometimes you gotta, you know, keep it in, in light, but you know, every board that, and I've been doing this here since 1975, not on a board, but with the city. Every elected board is, is much more effective when they can communicate and get along with each other.
Amen.
And agree to disagree at times. That's okay. Nothing wrong with that. But it's, you know, it's, it's always been obvious that when the boards can work with each other, it, it, it benefits everybody in the community. And that's, that's what we're all here for anyway.
Absolutely.
Any other council comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Now we say amen.
Amen.